Good morning, members. Please return to your seats. We're ready. We have a quorum. It's the appointed time we start the Special Finance Committee meeting. There are two sessions in the morning segment all the way till twelve forty-five. We're here to scrutinize the estimate of the administration to ensure that the funding asked for, it does not exceed the funding required for the department. I ask members to ask questions relating only to the area in question. When you cite the reply, please say FSTB FS and then the reply number. If you want to ask supplementary questions, you may do so in written form. Give the supplementary information, supplementary question to the secretariat, and it can only be in relation to the questions asked. And I will decide the number, the time allotted to members depending on the number of people. Let's welcome Mr. Joseph Chen, Acting Secretary for the FSTB, and Ms. Selina Yan, Permanent Secretary for the FSTB. Members who would like to ask questions, please press the Request to Speak button. We will first hear from Mr. Chen. Good morning, everyone. I will quickly go over the estimate of expenditure for financial services and our key areas of work in the coming year. In relation to the financial services branch and departments under its purview, the allocation for twenty twenty-three to twenty-four is about one point eight billion dollars. The amount represents a reduction about zero point three five billion dollars over the revised estimate. This is mainly due to the reduced cash flow requirement of the EMPF platform project under the branch's general nonrecurrent account. In the coming year, we will on one hand focus on safeguarding Hong Kong's financial stability and on the other, continue to develop our financial market. On the latter, there are three areas, namely enhancing market competitiveness, seizing new opportunities, as well as promoting financial inclusiveness and nurturing talents. First, on enhancing market competitiveness. The budget has set out a basket of measures to consolidate Hong Kong's position as an asset and wealth management hub. We have introduced legislative amendment to provide profits tax exemption for family-owned investment holding vehicles managed by single-family offices in Hong Kong. We have successfully held the Wealth for Good in Hong Kong Summit on the twenty-fourth of March to establish direct connection and foster cooperation with global family offices. We'll work with regulators to refine the regulatory measures and review the existing tax arrangements to create a facilitative environment for meeting the development needs of this industry. We'll also attract more new capital and talents to Hong Kong through the New Capital Investment Entrant Scheme. On the development of offshore RMB market, the focus is to promote the issuance and trading of RMB securities in Hong Kong. The government has already made legislative amendments to exempt the stamp duty payable for market makers so as to support the launch of dual counter-market maker regime by the Hong Kong Exchange. Mutual market access with Minglan is the unique advantage of Hong Kong. We're actively making preparations to set up RMB securities trading counter under self-bound trading of Stock Connect, and we'll continue to forward expansion of mutual market access and enhancement arrangements, such as the Bond Connect and the Cross-Boundary Wealth Management Connect Scheme in the Greater Bay Area, as well as the provision of more risk management products for offshore investments, including the issuance of Minglan government-banned bond futures in Hong Kong. Regarding the insurance market, we'll expand, we'll extend the Pilot Insurance Linked Securities Grant Scheme for two years to continue to attract more institutions and nurturing talents with a view to support the industry in the expansion of channels for risk diversification and management. On securities market, we'll continue to enhance the listing and trading mechanisms. After consulting the market, Hong Kong EX has launched the Listing Regime for Specialist Technology Companies from end of March, expanding the listing channel for issuers. They also put forward specific reform proposals for GEM within twenty twenty-three for formal consultation and enhance the listing rules, including relevant arrangements concerning share buyback by issuers. In addition, they will also explore measures for refining the trading mechanism of stock market to facilitate transactions of investors and respond to the market trend. On bond market, we will encourage more Minglan local governments at different levels, as well as Minglan and overseas public and private institutions to issue offshore RMB bonds in Hong Kong. In this regard, we have made an order to extend the coverage of profits tax exemption to the debt instruments issued here by all Minglan local People's Government at any level with effect from the thirty-first of March this year. We'll also consolidate the experience gained from the recent issuance of tokenized government green bonds, explore the potential of using financial technology to improve the bond issuance process, and consider policy initiatives to promote the wider use of tokenization technology in our capital market. On seizing new opportunities, the FS will set up a Green Technology and Finance Development Committee for promoting the development of Hong Kong into an international green technology and finance center. We'll promote green finance application and innovation facilitating projects to obtain capital more conveniently through financial innovations. As regards fintech, we'll continue to take forward the application of testing and preparatory work for various projects, including e-Hong Kong Dollars, ECMY, the use of faster payment systems and prompt pay by visitors from Hong Kong and Thailand for local payment, as well as the continuous enhancement of the commercial data interchange. In addition, following our issuance of Policy Statement on Development of Virtual Assets in Hong Kong, the FS will set up a task force to spearhead the next step. At the same time, we plan to introduce a company redomiciliation mechanism to facilitate companies domiciled overseas and particularly enterprises with a business focus in the Asia-Pacific region for redomiciliation. We started consulting major stakeholders last month. After we've taken their views, we'll formulate the details of the legislative proposal with a view to presenting it in twenty twenty-three and twenty-four. On promoting financial inclusiveness and nurturing talents, as regard the MPF, to provide scheme members more investment choices, the government plans to accord priority to investment by MPF funds in certain portion of future government issuances of institutional green and infrastructure bonds, while the Hong Kong MA and the MPFA are studying options to set up MPF fund with stable return at low cost. In addition, we are preparing for the proposed increase in tax deduction for employers' voluntary MPF contributions for the employees' age sixty-five or above. On retail bonds, the government plans to issue no less than fifty billion dollars of silver bond and fifteen billion dollars of retail green bonds in this financial year in order to facilitate market development and offer the public more options. On training talents, the government will launch a fintech internship scheme for post-secondary students that aims at facilitating students studying in fintech-related subjects to acquire practical work experience. We'll also extend the pilot program to enhance talent training for the insurance sector and the asset and wealth management sector for three years to nurture more talents for the industry. Chairman will be happy to answer your questions. Thank you. Thank you. At the moment, fourteen members would like to ask questions. I would like to say that this session lasts till eleven fifty-five. I allocate four minutes to each member's questions and answers included. Yesterday, I only had a one minute, one second to change to the next session. I was informed by the technicians that it is impossible. So we need to make good use of our time. I'll read out the names. Chen Kien Po, Chen Pu Leng, Hauden Chau, Kam Man Ken, Nick Cielem, Ma Feng Kwok, Robert Lee, Tan Yeh Heng, Chuck Si Chung, Rock Chen, Adrian Ho, So Cheung Wing, Wendy Hong, and Edmund Wong. We'll start with Mr. Chen Kien Po. Thank you. It's zero zero four. In relation to the EMPF platform, I believe that when it comes to the public and service providers, they hope that the EMPF platform will be launched in time so that the administrative cost will be greatly reduced. So how do you ensure that the EMPF platform is launched on time? That is very important. I have some questions to ask. In your reply, you said that you have enhanced project management. So what enhancements are they? Two. If the platform cannot be launched on time, are there any backup plans? And if it's not launched in time, the labor sector is very concerned about whether the offsetting, the cancellation of the offsetting mechanism will be affected. So there are three questions altogether. Thank you for the questions. First, in relation to the progress of the EMPF platform. According to the contractor, the development of the platform, as we've said in the panel, that it will be delayed to the middle of twenty twenty-three. In relation to testing, it will be delayed to the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three. So the handover of the platform might be delayed by eight months from the contract date. But our ultimate goal is to launch within twenty twenty-five and complete all the transitional arrangements so that the full launch can take place in twenty twenty-five as scheduled. That itself hasn't changed. And I'd like to explain more about the other point. Well, the contractor actually has a catch-up plan. The EMPF company and the contractor have been working on compressing the time required for the following work in order to catch up. We have engaged an independent consultant to make sure that the catch-up plan is feasible. And in order to ensure quality of the project, the MPFA as well as the EMPF company have put in place a number of measures. They, for example, increasing participation of the higher echelon of the management, capital invested, as well as monitoring. The EMPF company will maintain all the rights under the contract, that is, to take legal action against the contractor if there is any delay and there may be damages, liquidated damages claimed against the contractor. I would like to say one thing. Please talk to the operators more because there is a trusty associations with experts and professionals who know very well what's going on. And they are closely related to service providers, so they know the difficulties they encounter. Talk to them more. This will make sure that the process will be smoother. Thank you for the reminder. And the member is right. The development of the EMPF platform and the transition will need the cooperation of the trade. We will continue to talk to them to make sure that the transition is smooth, and we will collect views from them and listen to the issues they encounter. Next, Mr. Chen Pu Leng. It's reply number zero one nine. It talked about pilot schemes on training, and there is a quota of four hundred and fifty people, and they have completed the pilot training scheme. Their university graduates. So have you conducted any assessments to see if, how many of them end up working in the insurance sector under the pilot program? If not, will you conduct a survey to find out the effectiveness of this pilot program? And in the budget, it's mentioned that this pilot program will be extended for three years. So would the amount would be the same? That is fifty millions for wealth management and fifty million for the insurance sector to use. The other one is zero two one. I would like to know more about your reply. I can see that for eligible and deferred annuity policies, starting from twenty nineteen, there are about a hundred and thirty-three. But by twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, it has sharply dropped to about one hundred and thirty-three, about six hundred. What, that is a sharp drop. So I know that a lot of people have minded to withdraw the scheme after the capital preservation period. Do you have anything to add? Yes, indeed. In relation to the pilot program, it's very well received and widely supported by the sector. That's why we have made a decision to extend the pilot scheme. At the pilot program. As at the end of twenty twenty-two, the actual expenditure was fifty-two point four million dollars. In relation to the development and the figures, the member asked for, I will defer to the FS branch. Ms. Yan?
Well, the program itself, that is, the pilot program to enhance talent training for the insurance sector and the asset and wealth management sector, has been very well received, but we have now asked whether the participants have ended up working in the insurance sector. We are minded to follow up on this. In relation to the withdrawal of the scheme, we think that the proposal itself is popular, but we will continue to follow up on withdrawal and cancellation of these policies. What about the deferred annuity policy? And back to the training program, will you give another one billion dollars? The allocation is still fifteen, is still a hundred and fifty billion dollars. In relation to the pilot program, that one billion dollars include the insurance sector as well as the wealth management sector. So fifty million is for the insurance sector and fifty million for the wealth management sector. Well, the FS branch has already answered the question. In relation to the deferred annuity policies, reason for the drop in number of policies? I'll defer to the PAS, Mr. Chen. Ms. Chen?
We are aware that the deferred annuity policies are popular among people who would like to have added protection after their retirement. But as to whether they cancel their policies after five years, I believe that the insurance authority have put in place new guidelines to enhance a regulation. I will give more details to members after the meeting.
The number dropped from a hundred and thirty-three thousand to thirty-six thousand in terms of the number of policies. Are there reasons behind it? Can you provide supplementary responses after the meeting? Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. Hauden Chau. I would like to follow up on FSTB FS zero zero four. It's a question from Mr. Chen Kien Po on the EMPF platform. The platform is delayed for eight months. The administration said that you will, it will reserve the rights to claim against the contractor for liquidated damages. My question is, when will the administration be able to communicate with the contractor and get a clear recovery plan and a new updated schedule from the contractor? This is my first question. My second question, the public is concerned when the platform will be launched. This is to provide better transparency and flexibility for the public to handle the MPF. It is mentioned that one hundred and ninety million dollars will be provided as cash advance. Will the delay affect the early adopters in terms of onboarding the platform? And that the cash advance will be withdrawn? So two questions from me. Thank you. Secretary. Thank you, member, for the question. Regarding the first part of the question, the HK MPFA and EMPF companies' target remained unchanged. Some ten billion accounts will be transferred by twenty twenty-five. By then, the platform will be fully functional. Member was correct that there is a delay, and there will be a recovery plan to catch up on the schedule. And we have enhanced regulations and measures. The contractor has already engaged a third-party professional consultant to conduct an independent assessment to ascertain the feasibility and credibility. So the work I mentioned has already been carried out. If more details are required, I can provide supplementary responses after the meeting. I'll invite Ms. Yan to respond to the second question. There is a delay. MPFA and the government will insist on allowing the trustees to go on board on the platform by twenty twenty-five. This is the schedule undertaken. The first batch of onboarding was delayed, but we remain or maintain the target of twenty twenty-five to launch the platform. So we have to compress the schedule. MPFA and the government have all along stressed that the platform has to be feasible and credible. That means the platform will have to function normally. The subsidies provided to the early adopters will be kept because the early adopters will go on board when the platform is tested and launched. The schedule for onboarding of the early adopters or the other trustees will be ascertained with the subsidiarily legislations. Next, Ms. Kam Man Ken. I'd like to follow up on FSTB FS zero zero six and zero zero two, and then I'll follow up on the third question. I'd like to follow up on the Hong Kong Investment Company Limited. There is sixty-two billion dollars of subsidies. Some are for GBA and some for other investment portfolio. There is already a website, so it's easy for us to look for information about the investment company, but information provided is limited. To participate in the co-investment program, the board meeting was held in February. And the HKMA is also involved. For investment strategies, the information is not released yet. How can we become co-investment partners? We are not clear about that. It says that some criteria include local development and development potential, but the information is vague. And it says that investment proposals will be required. Since it involves sixty-two billion dollars, we're all concerned about this project. Another question is about e-Hong Kong dollar. It mentioned that there is prompt pay between Hong Kong and Thailand to provide convenience to visitors for payment. On retail level in Hong Kong, the detailed information has not been released yet. So how are you going to decide when it will be implemented in Hong Kong? The third question is that the FS mentioned that bonds will be issued regarding infrastructure projects in Hong Kong, and it accounts for four percent of the GDP in Hong Kong. Would there be more information about infrastructure bonds to be issued? Thank you. Secretary. On Hong Kong Investment Company. On the fifteenth of February this year, we have already announced the members on the board of the company, and they will formulate the investment strategies and criteria to ensure that there is high corporate governance. HKMA will provide to the company the backend support. I'll invite colleagues from HKMA to elaborate on the details. The other question about prompt pay, that is the central bank digital currency. I will also invite other colleague to elaborate. On HKIC, I'll invite Grace to respond. Ms. Lau? Ms. Grace Lau, please. Thank you. HKIC has mentioned, on the twenty-eighth of February, the first meeting was held on the structure and governance of the company. Sorry, Chairman. The information provided in your answers are already known. Can you respond to the questions I asked? Yes. In the coming board meetings, they will explore the investment strategies and standards. Under HKIC, there will be four funds, and the focuses of each fund will be different. In terms of strategies, more detailed discussions will be required. In terms of co-investment partners and the criteria or eligibility, we'll also look into that. There is a website on HKIC. People who are interested can submit proposals and email it to the email address provided on the website, and we will follow up. In terms of investment proposals, what kind of criteria or standards are you looking for? Well, time is up for Ms. Khan on the proposal mentioned by Ms. Khan, and also the follow-up question zero zero two, and also the answer on issuance of bonds. Can the administration provide supplementary responses after the meeting to Ms. Khan, please? Thank you. Next, Ms. Nick Cielem. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to follow up on FSTB zero three four. On bond markets, there is a lack of diversification of bonds issued in Hong Kong. Would the administration explore with the sector how to make use of green finance to strengthen the bond market in Hong Kong? Can you provide concrete proposals on how to expand the bond market in Hong Kong? For instance, issuing a retail bond so that more investors can take part in it? This is related to question three from Ms. Khan. If you can respond to that, then no supplementary answers will be required. Yes, Secretary. In terms of bond market, Hong Kong is in a leading position in Asia on arranging bonds for Asian institutions. We are in seven years in the role ranked the first in the world. In twenty twenty-two, there is over one hundred billion US dollar of bonds issued, accounting for thirty percent of the share in the market. In terms of bond issuance, we're doing quite well. We also attach importance to green and sustainable bond or finance development. In terms of measures taken by the government, including the green bond from twenty nineteen to the present, we've been issuing green bonds, including the largest ESG bond in Asian markets. They are issued by us. We're talking about the largest world's retail green bond issued by us. So we've been doing quite well in this regard. In terms of other work that we do, well, as mentioned in my opening remarks, in order to encourage different levels of Minglan governments to issue bonds in Hong Kong, we have provided or offered a complete tax regime. Over the past two years, Shenzhen Municipal Government has issued bonds in Hong Kong, including green bonds, and Hainan Municipal or Provincial Government also issued bonds in Hong Kong. Apart from launching green bonds, we also promote the offshore RMB bonds issuance in Hong Kong. I'll invite HKMA to elaborate more.
Mr. Chen? Thank you for the question. In relation to the Hong Kong MA, we are doing a number of tasks. The secretary talked about how to attract more bond issuance here. In relation to municipal government issuance, we have been doing our promotion. We assisted them. And we have also conducted briefing sessions as well as analysis with them. Just now, the green bond was mentioned. How do we create a better ecosystem for that? We're using government funding to provide subsidy schemes. These schemes subsidize expenditure relating to green certification and issuance of green bonds. This subsidy scheme has assisted and attracted a lot of institutions outside Hong Kong to come here to issue green bonds. These are all conducive measures for the promotion of the development of the industry. In relation to the scale of issuance of green bond, we will increase it. For over five years, every year, we have $65 billion in either green bond or infrastructure bond, and this is a new requirement. We'll work with the government to come up with plans to implement these initiatives. Next, Mr. Ma Fengkong. I would like to follow up on 116 in relation to family offices. The government's reply is that in the past 18 months, there are 24 family offices that have established or expanded their operations here. Well, two-thirds of the time has elapsed, so it's about 1% of the target, which is about 200 family offices. So of the 24 family offices, what is the volume of their asset managed here? And what is the aggregate amount of asset of these 24 offices? What are the economic benefits they have brought? And the economic performance of these assets? Do they meet the expectations of the government? How do you assess their performance? Any KPIs? I'd like to hear from the government. Mr. Chen, thank you. Family offices is a key area of our work. I would like to first give you some background information. There is no legal definition of a family office, so it's difficult for us to tell you how many of them are there. This figure comes from the Invest Hong Kong. They make contact with Invest Hong Kong. That's why we know they have made their presence. In relation to the scale and their operations, it's their own business. So we're not in a position to divulge any information or make it public. As I said in my opening remark, that we are working on tax exemptions for single-family offices. With the profits tax exemption, we can see through this mechanism how many family offices are operating in Hong Kong. Under the Invest Hong Kong, we have a team, dedicated team, Family Office Hong Kong Team. They will make contact with family offices. We will follow up on these entities to see how they're performing, to make sure that they will meet the KPI we have set. I would like to ask about the 24 family offices. You say that they have come to Hong Kong to establish themselves or expanded their operations. How many of them established themselves here? How many of them expanded their businesses here? I would defer to Ms. Chen for further details. PAS. For the 24 family offices coming to Hong Kong via the dedicated team, 13 came from the mainland, three from Europe, three from North America, and five from Asia-Pacific. We have not differentiated whether they are newly established ones or ones that come here for expansion. Any family offices who would like to establish their presence here, if they approach Invest Hong Kong, they will receive a one-stop service. Well, you can't even differentiate whether they come here to establish themselves or to expand their business. I'd find it puzzling. We will find the information. We will find out more information from Invest Hong Kong after the meeting. Thank you. Next, Mr. Robert Lee. Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to thank the administration for answering 29 of my questions in relating to financial services. I would like to ask 85, 113, and 88. The first one is the enhanced cross-boundary wealth connect. I would like to ask about non-banking intermediaries and their participation and the range of products. So what is the biggest difficulty you have encountered? What more can the industry do to help? It's been a year. We have seen very little improvement. The other one is 113 in relation to stand duty on stock transfer. From the reply, it says that for 2022 to 23, the revenue from this area is $52 billion, which is a drop by $13.9 billion because the daily trade volume of Hong Kong securities has dropped. So raising the stand duty on stock transfer does not bring more revenue. So would you admit that the raise of stand duty will increase transaction cost? Has the administration considered that increasing stand duty on stock transfer may not increase revenue? The other question is reply number 88 in relation to SMEs. The administration said for listing applications for enterprises with a capitalization of more than $1.25 billion, it will take 130 days, less than that amount, 203 days. And for GEM board, it takes 170 days or so. So for smaller SMEs, the time required to process listing application takes longer. Well, have you collected information in relation to the difference of time required to process these different applications? The first question is about the cross-boundary wealth connect. The background is complex because it covers three different regulatory systems. The regulators of the three places have their own regulatory framework and practices. So if there is any breakthrough, we need the cooperation of the three places. I've been talking to the member. We are aware of the areas that need enhancement. Say, for example, the expansion of institutions, whether they include local security companies, whether the scope of asset can be expanded, and whether there can be any streamlining of the sales process. For these three areas, we're talking to mainland regulators. When one is ready, we will launch it. We'll continue to follow up the work in this area. We'll continue to talk to the trade. The second question is about stand duty on stock transfer. The members write that in 2022, the daily average transaction of Hong Kong securities is about $124.9 billion, which is a drop compared to 2021. But if you look at 2020, it was about $125 billion. So between 2020 and 2022, the daily volume of transaction is more or less the same. There is a change because of different factors, including external factors, increase in interest rates, as well as geopolitical reasons. So when we look at the effectiveness of the raise of SM duties, you have to look at the basket of factors and the global situation. If you look at the transaction cost of stock and securities apart from stand duty, you have to consider that there is no capital gains tax here. We don't have dividends tax either, so you have to take them into account. In the long run, we will balance the needs of our finances and their different needs. About enhancement of listing applications for SMEs, please give us an answer in detail. Next, Mr. Tanyue Hang.
Thank you. I would like to follow up on 129. 130. I asked about dim sum bond. I thank the administration for giving me detailed answers. But in the past a few months, a lot has happened. I think there are some financial measures that can be more progressive compared to the time when the budget was delivered. I would like to ask about internationalization of RMB. There is unprecedented opportunities because there are major changes in the world. Well, we encountered difficulties, and these are how to provide more RMB-denominated products. There are a number of measures in this regard, but I'd like to ask, in the issuance of RMB-denominated bonds and RMB settlements, can there be more specific measures? The other question is about green finance. In October 2022, there was core climate in relation to the carbon market. What is the progress of development? It's been a few months. What? Are there any changes in the number of participants and the activities? And in relation to ESG disclosure? Have you considered the compliant cost of disclosure for small and medium-sized institutions? Mr. Chen, thank you.
Perhaps I will first defer to my colleague about work on ESG disclosure by small and medium enterprises before I answer questions about RMB businesses. About ESG disclosure, we are aware that the compliant cost may be major to SMEs. Under the Cross Departmental Working Group, they are looking into this issue. They are working with an international consultant to find ways to help SMEs to ensure that they will better understand ESG requirements whilst complying with ESG disclosure. In relation to core climate, I would like to say that core climate is a key area that we're working on to enhance internationalization of RMB because core climate is the only marketplace that provides transactions based on Hong Kong dollars and RMB. We have attracted a number of participants. Over 20 participants from the mainland, Hong Kong, and from the international communities have participated. Core Climate provides an infrastructure, a transaction platform that is transparent. We use over 30. It covers over 30 projects, covering hydro, electricity, solar energy. The number of participants has been increasing. We now have over 20 participants, and it covers over 30 projects. We will continue our work to see how we can expand the scope. About mass market product for RMB is something that we're looking into. Perhaps I'll give you more details after the meeting.
Next, Mr. Chow Shiu-chung. Thank you, Chair. I'd like to follow up on FSTB FS 028 about 100% personal loan guarantee scheme. This scheme has been rolled out for less than two years. There were over 110,000 applications received with the administration approving over $70,000 of subsidies. This is a good scheme. Understand that the administration said that it has no plan to extend the scheme. What are the reasons behind this? If the administration regularizes the scheme, what is the burden on the public finance? My second question. On 004 about EMPF platform, that is the delay of the platform. Secretary mentioned that he is quite confident that the platform can be launched as scheduled by 2025. Have you thought of the worst-case scenario? Regarding the EMPF platform, there are two aspects to it. The administration undertook that it will provide contributions for low-income citizens. Also, through the EMPF platform, the government pledged to lower the processing fees for users. If the platform cannot be launched as scheduled, then the public will suffer. Do you have any recovery plan for those who are affected? Will you offer financial assistance to those who will be affected? Secretary. Thank you, member, for the question in relation to the first question. That is about the personal loan guarantee scheme. It will run until the end of April 2023. It was set up to cope with the labor market situations during the epidemic. Now that the epidemic subsides and there is a positive economic growth projection, and we believe that the unemployment rate will continue to drop, so there is no need to carry on with the guarantee scheme. In terms of the number or the statistics in relation to the scheme, I'll invite my colleague to elaborate. Thank you, Mr. Chow, for the question. In relation to the number of applications and the number of applications approved, I believe we have provided these numbers in our written reply. Chair, my question is mainly about this. What will the impact be on public finance if we regularize the scheme? There are two aspects to it. We have to look at how many people applied for the scheme. Well, if you talk about the future, we still see that the economy is recovering with a decreased unemployment rate. We believe that there will be fewer people applying for the scheme. If you project the future using the figures from the past, it may not give an accurate picture. How about the question about EMPF platform? We are confident that by 2025, the platform will be delivered so that the platform can be functional by 2025. And we're now in April 2023, and we're working full steam to launch the platform to make sure that we can reach the target to launch the platform by 2025. As mentioned, we already have some proposals in place, and we have professional consultants to make sure that we can catch up on the progress and make sure that the project management can be enhanced and will work towards this target. In the meantime, we will work hard to In the meantime, we will work hard to achieve the target of twenty twenty five and this target remains unchanged. Next, Mister Rock Chen. I'd like to follow on F S T B F S zero 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 three zero. It's mentioned here that the investable area and amount for the capital investment entrance scheme is under review. We are striving or competing for talents and Hong Kong is one of the most competitive cities in Asia. I'd like to ask about this capital investment entrance scheme. In the future, what are the advantages of this scheme that make us more competitive compared to Singapore? Some investors told me that they would like to see some products to ensure capital preservation. What products will you roll out to make sure that there um are there is more diversification in terms of investment products? Thank you for the question. On the new capital investment entrance scheme will in attract more investment capital and also inject impetus to our economy. We'll consider a few things with our policy goal and also um there are different factors that we will consider as we attract investment capital. So the thresholds will um increase by a multiple folds. And as mentioned, we want to inject new impetus to our economy. We will make reference to the previous capital investment entrance scheme and also we will consider new proposals. For instance, we will see if the um capital and talents will uh foster the development of um I N T industries in Hong Kong. In terms of capital preservation products, we will um look into it. And member asked about our competitiveness compared to other countries or cities. Last year, there was an international report and we are ranked the second in around the world and first in Asia in terms of competitiveness of Hong Kong. So while we formulate policies in relation to the new capital investment entrance scheme, we will also consider the situations in other countries or cities around the world. And we formulate policies in relation to attracting capital and talents and also family offices. Say for the tax concessions for family offices set up in Hong Kong. In that scheme, we do not require family offices to invest in local in products. But there are such requirements in other places. So our threshold may be lower than other um places and that may make us more competitive. Next, Mister Adrian Ho. But before Mister Ho asks his question, I'd like to say a few words. Due to technical reasons, we have to stick to the time and to make sure that I can transition to the next session. Mister Ho and Shou Chang-Wing and also Miss Wendy Hong and will ask questions. And after that, we'll conclude this session. I'd like to um follow on F S T B F S zero six F and a question from Miss Kam and Khan. Based on statistics from the administration, the M P F has set up for some two decades and the investment return is not satisfactory. And risk management performance is not satisfactory and it deals a heavy blow to the market. This is a concern from people retiring in Hong Kong. Will you set up new M P F measures? For instance, inflation-linked bonds, that is I-bonds, so that people with less knowledge on investment can benefit from it. Also, for E M P F platform, will lower the processing fee for NGOs and or the government? Will you allow them to be trustees to relax the selection portfolio of M P F account holders? In terms of statistics, as at end of January this year, excluding the fees to be charged, the net investment return of M P F that is from December twenty twenty two, the net investment return is minus eight point two percent. And so it is higher than the inflation rate. Over the past twenty-one years, there are ups and downs in the market. As a long-term investment plan, we have to look at the investment return in the long run when we look at the performance of M P F. Member is right that we have to provide more options to M P F account holders. As mentioned in the opening remarks, we will issue green bonds and infrastructure bonds and we will um put certain shares of these bonds investment into M P F for investment because these are more stable investment tools and also H K M A and M P F A are also looking at stable investment proposals to provide more options to account holders. At the same time, we will continue to liaise with the market or different sectors to see what kind of new investment products will be suitable to be rolled out for the public. And we will continue to liaise with the members of the public as well as different stakeholders. And we welcome any opinions. And we are working in full steam to work on the E M P F platform so that it can be launched by twenty twenty five and it will also bring benefits and lower processing fees for the M P F users. Any follow-up questions? No, thank you. Next, Mister Shou Chang-Wing. I'd like to follow up on F S T B F S one two five. We all know the advantages of relaxing the R M B investment market or R M B-denominated shares market. It involves a great spectrum of investment, including local and overseas market. As far as I understand, a lot of the products we see in the market, the nature of these products in mainland, well, these informations is not familiar to the general public. Will the administration target different groups of people to stimulate the participation of investors in the market? Well, you did not reply to this question in your written response. Do you have expenditure on your publicity campaign? And going back to the M P F platform, this involves some ten million accounts and it's been dragged on for some six months now. You say that you've been working with the contractor, but what measures exactly do you have in place is not clear to us. Do you have any financial and or economic means to sanction the contractor? Once the E M P F platform is launched, within ten years, some three hundred to four hundred million dollars will be saved. And every year, some three hundred million dollars can be saved. The contractor is saying that they are understaffed. Well, we're short of manpower across all sectors in Hong Kong. Do you have any economic means to push the contractor to address the manpower problem? Well, we're talking about four billion dollars of savings. Do you have any punitive measures against the contractor, secretary?
For the first part, in relation to R M B-denominated products, there are a lot of offshore RMB investment products in the form of bonds or E T Fs. We have pub we have promoted investor education. And there is an investor uh education um council under the S F C. Since the organization is under the S F C, the expenditure uh is under the S F C, not from our bureau. I am actually the chairperson of one of the advisory committees. So in relation to investor education promotion, we give them advice. We will continue our work in retail investment products. And R M B products is an important area. Well, for E M P F, I'm not going to go into details about the recovery of uh to catch up. In terms of progress, there are three areas: hardware, software and tests and work procedures. For the three areas, two of them are on time. It's just one that needs catching up. In relation to manpower, the member is right. For various reasons, we suffer from manpower shortage. We have spoken to the contractor and they have increased manpower on development of the E M P F platform. Well, you want us to lean on them. Well, under the contract, we can claim for liquidated damages for any delay. So that itself is a reason why they need to catch up. Next is Miss Wendy Hong. Thank you. I would like to follow up on zero six four is my own question. The budget mentioned about the Hong Kong Investment Corporation is up and running. It that itself is a financial tool to promote emerging industries and to attract enterprises and talents to Hong Kong in order to further promote strategic development. It's very different from the Exchange Fund. But the investment is done by the Hong Kong M A. So when it comes to vision, plan, strategies, they are quite opaque. And I can't see the difference between that and the Exchange Fund. It was announced in the policy address yet last year. It's over six months. Uh, can we can you give us more information about the investment team, these uh investment strategies, criteria, assessment? So that um the investment can be put on the right track. And there are four types of organizations that have contacted me. First, uh they would like to provide funding to co-invest. And the second institutions are fund companies who would like to provide fund. And the third types are those in relation to financing. And the fourth type. I have sent letters to all members of the board of the investment corporation, but I have yet to receive any reply. Can you give us any update? And I would like to ask about the uh capital investment entrance scheme. The budget mentioned that property investment is included. But there are many loopholes in the different investment and immigration schemes. Say, for example, holding a property via a company and hold properties of via uh funds. How do you address these loopholes? There are also investors who put funds via insurance policy. Say, for example, uh there is investment of um one million dollars when the requirement is ten million. They have made use of existing loopholes to not meet the requirements. What do you do to um address these loopholes? First, in relation to the scheme, where we have yet to roll out the details. We're looking into the details. We're threshing them out. You're right that we attach, we are quite concerned about um investment on property. That's why investment on properties will be excluded. We'll put in place measures to prevent abuse. We'll continue to talk to the 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 trade and members. In relation to the Hong Kong Investment Corporation and first about the positioning of the corporation. It aims to enhance Hong Kong's competitiveness and to lead the development of strategic industries in Hong Kong and to identify investment opportunities and to enhance our attractiveness to a to um attract talents and enterprises. So the position is very different from the Exchange Fund. Well, when the corporation was established on the fifteenth of February, we have appointed a members. They will work on the details. In relation to inquiries, the Hong Kong M A has been providing support. Let's see if the Hong Kong M A has anything to add. Mister, Miss Lau? Just a brief reply will do. We have received a lot of suggestions. We carefully look at each and every of these suggestions. When the website is in operation, we receive a lot of proposals via the website. We'll look into them one by one and reply swiftly. In relation to the independent team, well, we will keep an eye on manpower requirement and remuneration to form the independent team. Last person in this session is Mister Edward Wong. Is my own question. So is one forty and one three nine is in relation to the ensuring at the issuance of infrastructure bond. Well, um our current debt to GDP ratio is about four percent. So we have a very low level of outstanding loan, lower than other advanced economies. And in the coming five years, there will be about sixty-five billion dollars uh in terms of bond issuance, which is about fifty to sixty percent of our expenditure in the in the reserve. How do you work out that sixty-five billion dollars? Why don't you expand the issuance scope? Now there is a high interest um high-interest-rate environment. You need the support of the general public. I'm glad to hear that the administration's uh um widening the scope for public participation. How do you balance the risk brought in relation to one three nine? That is the pilot program to enhance talent training for the insurance sector and the asset and wealth management sector. From twenty nineteen, you have spent about ninety million dollars on it. Of course, it's not a huge amount because it's badly needed. I wonder whether that can be expanded. When asked about the effectiveness, the reply is that that is positively received by users, but there is no actual assessment of figures. That itself is not satisfactory. It's just like a student telling everyone how That itself is not satisfactory. It's just like a student telling everyone how good he's done, but he hasn't sat at any public examinations. There is no assessment mechanism and you have already put in close to ten billion dollars in it. Are there any indicators? How do you assess its effectiveness? Mister Chen? Thank you for the question. And I thank member, the member for his concern. Yes, manpower in the financial sector is very important. That's why the pilot program has been extended. If you would like to hear about indicators in relation to the pilot program, when it was launched in twenty sixteen, we have over five hundred and eighty tertiary institution universities attending. We have over nineteen thousand people who have signed up for eligible courses. In terms of the pilot program on insurance sector, when it was launched in twenty sixteen, internship places have been provided for over four hundred and fifty students and over fifteen thousand insurance sector practitioners have received some kind of subsidy. So we will continue to make use of this approach to provide internship opportunities to them and to give them subsidies in their training programs. This is just one of our initiatives. We have a multi-pronged approach to train our talents for acquirians and for wealth management experts and compliance experts. They, they are all on our talent list. So this helps us to attract overseas talents to come to Hong Kong. The member asked about bond issuance. There are different reasons for bond issuance. Some relating to policies for the government green bond program. We want to promote development of green finance and we want to be the leader and set the benchmark. In, in terms of retail bond, say, for example, the infrastructure bond to be issued or the green bond that have been issued, we want to make use of these programs to encourage the public to participate in investments with a stable return and they can also take part in green projects. For issuance, we take into account a basket of factors. Say, for example, public finances, cash flow and how much we need to do to achieve the policy objective. We'll continue to talk to members and the sector. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chen. That's the end of this segment. The next set, set, the next session will start at five past twelve.